Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for being here today. Tonight's meeting, we do not have any public hearings tonight, so we will be going right into our administrative agenda. And then after that, we will open the floor to our residents if they have any issues. So with that, Ms. Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor Longbody. I would ask the board to approve the minutes of March 20th, the Public hearing on 139 Jericho Turnpike. The regular board meeting minutes of March 20th, the work session of March 25th, and the reorganization minutes of last night, April 1st, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, is carried.
I would ask the board to approve the schedule of accounts payable consisting of the following. General fund, $712,272.63. Swimming pool fund, $1,750. Community development, zero. Capital fund, $115,835.95. For a grand total of $829,803.58.
I go for that resolution.
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh will please call the board.
Trusty Fitzgerald, Trusty Pombaner, Trusty Chang, Trusty Chiara, and Mayor Longbody. I would ask the board to determine the specially used permit application of 225 Jericho Turnpike is deemed to be an enlisted action as that term is defined in secret.
I'll offer that resolution. I was second. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh will please call the board.
Trusty Fitzgerald, Trusty Pombaner, Trusty Chang, Trusty Chiara, and Mayor Longbody. I would ask the board to deny the application of specially used permit application of Mr. Patel, please see 47 Culver Avenue, Floral Park, as outlined in the decision and resolution.
I'll offer that resolution. Second. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please call the board?
Trusty Fitzgerald, Trusty Pombaner, Trusty Chang, Trusty Chiara, and Mayor Longbody. I would ask the board to approve the request of the Floral Park American Legion post number 334 to have their annual memorial day parade on Monday, May 27, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. and to hold the memorial services in Memorial Park immediately after the parade.
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to recognize our post commander, Matt Cacciatore. Matt, thank you for everything you do on behalf of all of our members. Thank you. Can I ask for all in favor? Opposed, is carried. Thank you again, Matt.
I would ask the board to approve the request of the Floral Park Federal School to hold their 44th Annual Olympic Day Parade on Wednesday, June 5th, with the rain date of June 6th, with the same grab as in the past, and with the assistance of the police department, and to authorize the use of village barricades for the parade for their Junior Olympic Day on Wednesday, May 22nd, with the rain date of May 23rd, subject to receipt of certificate of insurance.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, is carried.
I would ask the board to approve the request of Floral Park Memorial High School to hold its homecoming parade on Saturdays, September 14th, rain date, October 26th, at 11:00 a.m., subject to receipt of certificate of insurance.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, is carried.
I would ask the board to adopt a resolution to amend Village Code, Chapter 96, Article 13, Section 96-75, Schedule 3, to install school speed limit signs as follows. At Van de Water Avenue going both directions between Plainfield Avenue and Locust Street. On Locust Street going in both directions between Van de Water and Miller Avenue. On Miller Avenue going both directions between Plainfield and Locust Street.
I'll offer that resolution. Second. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please call the board?
Trusty Fitzgerald, Trusty Pombaner, Trusty Chang, Trusty Chiara, and Mayor Longbody. I would ask the board to adopt a resolution to amend Village Code, Chapter 96, Article 12, Section 96-81, Schedule 3, to install a stop sign on Willow Street in the direction going on the Westerly side at the intersections of Willow and Birch Streets.
I do have a question on this one. Can I have it started?
I'll offer.
Second.
Alright, I do have a question on this one. And I want to ask Commissioner Gadd. This intersection, I believe, Mr. Swinney, there is no stop sign going east either. Am I correct?
Right, so what happens is you only have stop signs on Birch.
Birch, yeah.
Not coming out of the dead end off of Willow, coming out of the dead end in the sun or something like that. Or going into Willow.
Okay, but it's...
It's odd. Usually on Birch is the avenue and it'd be clear and Willow, so it's...
Exactly. My question here is what when we have stop signs in both directions to make it a four-way?
That's what we would do.
It says here only going in the Westerly direction.
Because of the...
Resolution.
Only West, West, I'm sorry.
Alright, can I amend this to have it going both ways? Both directions, easterly and westward? Okay, then I'm going to ask for amendment that the direction of travel be changed to both so that stop signs are going in both the easterly and westward direction.
You have to pick up the... That should be a four-way.
Okay, great, thank you. Alright, if it's... Okay, so we have a motion, second, and I guess for a motion on amended resolution.
Second.
Thank you. And there any other discussion others? If not, Ms. Walsh, will you please call the board on the amended resolution?
Trusty Fitzgerald, Trusty Pombaner, Trusty Chang, Trusty Chiara, and Mayor Longbody. I would ask the board to extend this streetlight contract with Go West with no change in rates and terms for a period of one year.
I go for that resolution.
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please call the board?
Trusty Fitzgerald, Trusty Pombaner, Trusty Chang, Trusty Chiara, and Mayor Longbody. I would ask the board to authorize Village Administrator Gerard Van Brick to sign the agreement with Signal Fire Apparatus regarding the sale of fire truck 1992 Spartan Salisbury, 1,500, 500 pump bro. It was the old engine 127.
I'll offer that resolution. I was second. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please call the board?
Trusty Fitzgerald, Trusty Pombaner, Trusty Chang, Trusty Chiara, and Mayor Longbody. I would ask the board to author a resolution to set the date for a tax sale to be held on May 8th, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. in the courtroom of Village Hall to recover the 2018 unpaid taxes on 23 parcels of property. Total taxes not paid, $104,258.43. Total penalties due on the above, $14,596.18. Cost of publishing the legal notice is $460. Total taxes with penalties added, $119,314.61. Total 2018 tax collection was $24,865,480.20. Excuse me, 28 cents. Percentage of taxes collected was 99.6%.
I'll offer that resolution. Second. We would just like to commend and thank every resident who has paid their taxes, all 99.6%. Ms. Walsh, will you please call the board?
Trusty Fitzgerald, Trusty Pombaner, Trusty Chang, Trusty Chiara, and Mayor Longbody. I would ask the board to approve Caitlin Connor, a laborer in Highway Department, to permanent status since he successfully completed his six-month probationary period.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please call the board?
Trusty Fitzgerald, Trusty Pombaner, Trusty Chang, Trusty Chiara, and Mayor Longbody. That would be all, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Ms. Walsh. I believe we may have some brief board reports. I think we start with that.
Thank you, Mr. Van Brink. Regarding to Delmon Park, approximately two weeks ago, the villagers received a response to a FOI request we made to the franchise oversight board back in October 2018, in which we asked for any and all correspondence that the franchise oversight board had in hand. Documents that were received back, which were after the deadline comments to the DEIS, contain a 16-plus page document from 2016 entitled "Delmon Park Master Plan." On reviewing the documents last week, Berries and Diamond, in the direction of the village, sent a letter to the ESD stating the following. One, a disappointment by the revelation that they had been previously developed a master plan for redevelopment of Delmon Park, but that needed input from the surrounding communities, and that this master plan was in existence yet undisclosed prior to commencement of this RFP process. Additionally, the aforementioned master plan is substantially the plan that was submitted and approved after the narrowly focused RFP process was completed. Two, as it was clear that the master plans that were interwoven with the master plan, they have stated that they are making major renovations of Delmon Park. These two projects cannot be segmented or separated. Therefore, we stated earlier that the DEIS process must go over to ensure the cumulative impacts of both New York real apartments and neither prepared improvements to study in one complete DEIS. Additionally, what is most unfortunate is that to date, there is still no statutory community advisory board of Delmon Park, as there is by law of both Apple and Saratoga. There have been my parts to support such a board, but never seems to be able to be passed in both houses of the Assembly during the same session. Definitely, both houses of the Assembly and Senate during the same session. The village has been asking for over a decade for such a board, and firmly believes that a community advisory board will allow for smart and measured development at Delmon Park that will benefit the surrounding communities as well as preserving Delmon Park as a premier destination for horse racing, as it had been for over a century.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Lee, does anybody else have anything? Okay, with that, I always have a motion to close. How many?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, is carried. And now we'll open up the floor to our residents about any issues. We will let them bring it forward here. Sir?
Don, the front. Morning, everyone. Good evening.
Mr. Howard.
My name is Don Howard. 138 Charles Street, Charles Street and Sickelore Avenue. And I'd like to call attention to the parking problem we have down on Charles Street and Sickelore. One block to the east, which is New High Park, there's a pay and night refrigeration company that provides parking space there for about 20 cars. The overflow of those cars, starting at 1:00 in the morning all the way through 5:00, will park up and down Charles and up and down Sickelore. Pretty much all back, the last two or three years, and I mentioned through the link that it's an ongoing problem, and I have been calling the Parking Violations Bureau people to accommodate, mark the tires. And I know that there is four-hour parking in four parks, but they continue to forget about that. And now that they come, and when I call on the phone, make no mistake, they will come down and the police and mark the tires. And there have been tickets that have been issued out, and it certainly has helped. And now, thanks to the link and the Parking Violations Bureau, they come down pretty much every day, five days, they come down maybe three or four. They're marking the tires, but now they're getting cute, and they're starting to walk out at after 8:00 to about 11:00. They'll come out in the lane and move the car, move the car. 10 feet, 5 feet, they're going, turning around to the other side of the street. But nevertheless, the cars are still there. Now that starts a congestion problem coming down Sickelore Avenue with huge trucks that make left turns, right turns, and can't make the swing because of these park cars, and can't make the left turn into New High Park. This industrial complex, which is pretty much what our area has become from Monday to Friday. It's just to the point now where every time I look out and I see cars in congestion, and there also is a John O'Bea bus stop on Sickelore and Charles heading up. Now, there is a sign on Jericho, "Come down Sickelore for no parking, four-hour parking." And there's a sign coming into Floral Park from New High Park. No trucks except for delivery or pickup trucks coming Charles Street. That doesn't seem to stem out of, this regard, the sign. And the parking and the trucks, even after, I know Officer Chris Timm came down to assess the area from 7:30, I guess he's there, to 9:30, and I was good, saw some trucks that came down, and they put up a "No Truck" sign on the telephone pole on Sickelore and Charles facing east, facing New High Park. But that doesn't seem to alleviate the problem. So I would like to just call to your attention, and maybe propose, I know Kevin is on Charles Street, as something similar to a template of what Hitchcock and Plainsfield, back at Ray Block, there's a "No Parking" sign from Monday to Friday. I think it's 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Now, the weekends are fine. The weekends are fine in like in the country. But on Monday to Friday, it's 8:00 to 4:00. And another example of it is on Forest, between Carnation and Remsen, with the old cap shape it's today. There's a "No Parking" from, I mean, 6:00 a.m. there till 6:00 p.m. Two-hour parking. So I'd like to vote maybe short of a "No Parking" sign whatsoever, maybe a two-hour parking sign there, Monday to Friday, Charles and Sickelore, maybe 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And hopefully that will end with, of course, enforcement of those. So you made a hundred signs, but if you don't have enforcement for it, it's good. So I just want to bring that up again. Get going.
So a bit of good news. The CFO of State and then actually called me to alert me to the problem. And he said...
His problem?
His problem, yeah. I guess they were getting tickets so his employee...
Yes, and now they need to be circuited when the Police, when the Parking Violations Bureau circulates.
When he called me, they've recently experienced a lot new employees, and he is looking for some places to mark and gave us some suggestions. So I know they are actively working on reaching out to some local establishments on behalf of Hawkins, not even during the day, it's nearby. So I know that would be a much better CFO.
Well, it's been news of the future.
Yeah, yeah.
It's been two or three-year problem, since they made it standard.
Has it been that long?
It's been that long, well, sure. I noticed it more than because I have retired now. Home now. And yeah, it's from blow to blow. The railroad is, not that that's a problem, I live in the back of a pool park, which is no problem. I live in the back of the railroad, which I can't do the fight. But I can mention that the parking might be something that...
Tom, how many houses does it come down? I mean, how many houses are affected?
I'd say from Charles Street corner in and around, ten.
Ten, okay.
Well, I don't know. I use that parking, my neighbors use that parking in front.
Because that's one of the things we have to be cautious about.
I would, that's all. And I've been handing the order back this long. I mentioned it to my neighbors. And I'll mention it to you.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering if the neighbors wouldn't mind if we did that. And that's, so we'll go and talk to them and see what they think, so.
Yeah.
Alright, okay, yeah, we'll definitely take a look.
Alright, great. And for a moment?
Alright. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Take care.
Is there anybody else? Shannon?
Yeah. They're having big problems with the railroad. Looking at the construction site. And my house is like disgusting looking at it. There's dust, there's dirt. They've always broken up on the trucks they've been bringing up down the street. I had a truck in my driveway the other day with the stabilizers down, put a hole in the road. They thought I was at home. I was there watching them. It's just becoming unbearable, and nobody is accountable. I've been told that there's going to be noise sound and air testing going on while this is going on. It's a block away, or two blocks away, they told me today. Travis came over today and told me it's down, they have downwind and upwind of the project. I said, "Well, how about right where it's going on?" Because the dust is coming to my house, I'm sure it'll come to you monitor if it was right there. "Oh, I'll get you one by the end of the day." But you were digging there yesterday, not today. So this is what seems to be going on. No matter what it is, people didn't take care of it. They always take care of it after the fact. It's never taken care of when stuff was going on. Not to mention that everything you discussed, they blame on the village. Everything I tell them, "Oh, we signed the contract for the Village Day." "Oh, well, the Village Day was permitted to do that."
You mean, what, what person?
They signed the contract for the Village Day. "We're going to hurry up and get this project done. It'll be done by September."
We even signed a contract.
The construction crew outside told us yesterday, the one managers, that not only are they not done by September, that they don't know when they're ever going to be done because it's big problems with the project that nobody seems to be aware of. That they don't have enough room to get through with their trucks and their, and their behind fence to actually, to finish the project, to finish putting the walls up and do what they have to do.
Do you want to say something, John? You had Travis come over.
I had him come over today.
Did you call anybody in the village who knew this, what's going on as far as the street or anything? I open that a lot every day almost. You don't have it?
Yeah, actually.
Pretty much every day. No, I'm saying just that every day. Did you call us in?
No, I didn't.
Could you please in the future, because sometimes they do respond.
It's becoming ridiculous, unbearable. Not to mention on Fuller Avenue, all the trucks and the buses and the cars, all day, every day. So I asked Travis today, I said, "Can you please have them put a flag in the window? Identify the part of the project." He had children coming home from school. 14-year-old girls, two of them, coming home from school, and there's all these crosswalks seeing little people in there. We don't know if they belong there. They don't belong there.
The white trucks can be there.
Yeah, well, we said the white trucks, you know, all the trucks.
Any other, any other truck, any other car or truck there, call us.
They're the safety officers, I'm told. They have no choice but to be there.
No, no, so we have the MOU. There will be no workers, private vehicles parked on residential streets. If we add that information, I can relate if I don't go...
Is for every day. Is at least, honestly, is at least four or five houses, just every day. And I've been sending this to you, right? And my other neighbor said that she called the village on Tuesday, and she let that know because the police, they came down and tried to give my neighbor a ticket for parking in front of his driveway there, if that was the only spot he could park, because they were all over the streets.
So again, you called Judy and I, that's why I did it.
No, but the village was also called, and then they sent the police, and then they didn't give my neighbor a ticket. Yeah, it's...
I don't know if he spoke to you. I don't know if he spoke to you, unless I mean, I'm just saying, normally I get a phone call that comes in about their truck.
They'll be all down there. You can check on Tuesday. The parking vehicle has to be...
So I don't know, I'm saying, we go up and down the street. Anytime I see a car, I know the little tricks they're playing. I make the phone call, and I usually move them, maybe not move them for a long period of time. They're supposed to be brought in by those white vehicles, the workers. And they're private vehicles, they're not supposed to be...
I can show you the pictures I sent the hour after the day now.
Can you do us a favor, please? If you send them, or send them to us, so...
Sure, if you tell me where to send them, I'm happy to send them to you.
You can send them to my email address? I'll give that to you at the end.
I'm told the safety officers, they have to be there. And I don't know if they're being able to...
They can be saved, but the agreement says that they are to be brought in via the vehicles we designate and things like that.
And they sleep in the cars, and eat in the car, and drink in the car, and you know, hang out all day in the cars. I don't see them doing anything as far as safety, they have to look at each other and... And yesterday, there was almost an accident because of how they're parking. Because as you know, Roscoe goes around the bend to the port. So they're parking all on that bend, and then they're parking on the first house on Fuller, that red house right there on the corner. So they're parking all along there, and they're parking that house that's next to mine that's vacant because they know nobody's there. So yesterday, two cars were coming, and they almost hit because they can't see coming around the bend.
Okay.
And I spoke to them, no response about Terrace Avenue in the morning when they bring the equipment in. It's one lane, and it's the time that children are going to school. People are driving kids to school. People walking to school. I can't tell you how many times they had almost an accident there, and suddenly, well, they killed them and children.
We have had police out there with them. We have had...
I went to the police department one day and told them...
We have had them, they've been out there, they've been out there.
They don't have any, so they have direct traffic. You know, they're standing on the curb, and the other guy is down at the end, and I'm told they're supposed to have walkie-talkies. They're not walkie-talkies. They're standing near the sign that they saw. I've never seen a walkie-talkie come out. Everything that they tell us is not done, and it's not true. And they also sent out a letter today telling us, you know, everything that's going to be going on. I want you to receive a copy of it.
I haven't seen that.
But I, I, I didn't, we didn't have it. Sending out a letter of everything that's to come, everything they're doing, and all the questions people are asking. If you can't live and work with this, and this is a problem, and you can't live and work with this, there is a community fund that you can apply for. I have put in whatever they told me to put in for the community fund three times already. I have gotten no response. They told me that it goes through the village. I think it's a list of method. I filled out a book of things, applications, and suggestions. Now it's suggestions.
We received them?
Yep. And I gave them all to her, and she swears that she gave them to the village. Actually, she gave them to you, she said, and I have heard that.
Tell them it was a message. We would have seen it. One of the three of us at least would have seen it.
I'm living in absolute hell.
Okay, if you could just get us copies of those, at least, I hope, alright?
Now, between the dust and the, I think the dust in my house three times a day. You know, that's a little ridiculous.
We will stop on that thing, on staying on, absolutely.
And I've promised things from the railroad, from you, I've promised from the railroad. The project says, "First of all, I didn't want to crash it to me. I'm going to put all the windows in your house. They're going to be soundproof, and they'll cut the dust because they're going to be curved around the windows, and they'll seal properly the door." "Okay, great. Come do it." Never got them, never called me back, and I called them. Everything that we've been promised along the way, we have not gotten.
Okay, what I'm going to ask you to do, is I didn't know he had promised you those either. So if you have a list of the things he promised you, please let us...
Anything in writing, or verbal promise?
Now, the whole, we're sitting at my table, we're like, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. We're giving you a driveway, because obviously you have...
If he said he was doing these things, then, you know, we'll go back and say, "Hey, did you promise these things?" I'll go back and ask him. And then tomorrow morning, ask him. But if you can get us everything that you said to him, and everything that he may have said that he promised you, please let us have that, okay? Anything you guys take a picture of and send to them, please make sure Jerry gets it, okay? Please make sure we have copies of everything. Because it's the only way we're going to be able to fight these things, and make sure that they're living by the MOU sign, and living by the agreement that they made so that they can do this project, okay? So, you know, and as for the roads and things like that, we won't keep them. You know, they have to fix the roads, and that probably won't happen until after the project is done, obviously.
Well, that makes sense.
Okay, but the reality is, is, you know, the home, everybody's homes that allowed it were videotaped and photographed to make sure. We will hold them, to making sure that they do the things that they said they were going to do. But in the meantime, they also shouldn't be disturbing your routine, your day, your day of lives, don't they? It sounds like they are, so let's, let's make sure I have all the details and all the things. Because we use those to fight for the things that we are supposed to be getting, supposed to be taking.
Right, don't worry about the kids, because the weather's getting worse, and they want to be outside.
Absolutely, absolutely. One of the things is, we, you know, recently did say, you know, we can start construction in a few months, which is, we want to get them in and out as fast as possible.
I agree with that.
And we must, you know, understand that five months, you know, sometime in September, okay? You know, I don't want to go crazy here on a specific date because I don't have it in my head. But the reality is, is that, you know, we're going to hold them to all of these things. It's even better if we have what you're sending them and what you're telling them, because that gives us ammunition to do the things that we need to do. So if you can please make sure we get whatever you send them. If you have a conversation with them, you know, shoot us a quick email saying, "I just spoke to them, dah 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 dah." You know, Jerry, Jerry will keep all this, and we have meetings routinely with them. And those are the things that I don't want to talk about. I don't, you know, I don't want to hear about, you know, what their plans are on May. This is what's supposed to be happening, so if you guys could, I'd appreciate it. It will help us tremendously.
They come to my house constantly, and we do things with them, we talk to them.
Yeah, every time you have a meeting, that's something you have.
I give it absolutely zero.
Okay.
And it's really, it's getting to the point where it's ridiculous.
We will follow up and make sure that they...
My houses, my, my side steps have moved two inches away from my house. My driveway is sinking. I have a slate patio that's on. My, all my properties destroyed from the ground, I have sprained stuff, it killed everything, and hasn't recovered back for six years. Environmentally, that can't be saved. So how these environmental tests came out good, I don't understand. I don't hear that it was done properly. I think if it's not done independently, we can't trust it. I think they're slowly killing all of us, that is true, because they have to. There's no possible way, nothing to grow a money line for six years and that's safe.
Yeah, okay. No, I...
That's really not okay.
No, I understand what you're saying.
And people are calling me. Every time they come and put the road and stuff out, because there's also rats in the street. So they put the road and things out. But what ends up happening is then they come and they do work, and they cover them up with the dirt. So I don't know what's happening. It's wetting, or straps. and they cover them up with the dirt. So I don't know what's happening, it's wetting, those traps. And I have people calling me from Charles Street, um, people that are running the county. The dogs are getting sick, they're not dying, and then go into, where the dogs are throwing up, you know, very strange. In one week, all, all the dogs in the neighborhood are sick. How does that happen? Somebody else has a coyhound, the York, walking fish and dead on that week. Something's going on, that, that nobody is addressing, and that nobody is willing to take responsibility for it.
Yeah, it's hard to hear things like that, but it is something that we can document.
I just want to say, oh, wow.
The government will go to that app.
I'll address that.
That was addressed.
Yeah, I'll address that.
You know, I have dogs, they were sick, you know, they start talking to people, and all of a sudden, that neighbor's dog is sick, and they're all strange. And early control truck is there. Like, how does that happen?
They came into them and not called for it.
Yeah. So, something really has to be done. Somebody has to be held accountable, somebody has to pull them to the car and take care of this.
We will do that as long as we have the information to do it.
Do you want me to write this all up for you?
Yes.
And drop it off? Do you want me to drop it to you?
Yeah, as Tom is not mentioning, if you can do it as more contemporaneously as it happens, that's actually a record that you're creating and we're forwarding on to them, and both of us have it. It's very helpful.
We have forwarded to them, and of course, you know, it goes unanswered because they don't want to be accounted for.
But, I'm sure you, Tom, and I go very briefly, and still we'll respond to that.
Yeah.
We definitely will.
I'll start documenting everything.
Yeah, seriously. That helps us get the information we need.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
I hope, I hope somebody is telling me the truth, because I don't believe anybody anymore. I know I didn't say that, but with the way this thing is gone, I really don't have faith in anybody.
Thank you.
Remake events. I just want to update from the latest wind event. I did get my car back yesterday finally, so it totally became a little plasticky at the place. But, a couple days ago with that, when I was coming home from work and driving into my driveway, I pulled in and just slammed on the brakes because there was a tornado, a full heap, right where my car had been parked, and it looked like it had been damaged by a tornado. So, there's some kind of wind thing going on. I was sat there bewildered and thinking, too late, that, oh, if my kids were here, we'd have this on video. But by the time I figured out how to video, my phone was gone. I just thought I recorded, never, ever seen that before. I did depart my car back away from that area where my car sat before and where I saw this wind thing happening. But, I'm parking now by the air conditioner, where the cover blew off, so I don't know if anything's really safe there. So, we're very anxious for the orders to happen. I did speak with Brian McDonough this morning, and he's very anxious. I know he's spoken to his client, and it's just been over three months since we started talking about this. And, you know, I know that we're apparently waiting on approvals or something. I don't know.
It's not either.
We don't even know, because we're being told different things, so.
I don't know what you're being told. I can tell you what's going on. We thought that villagers' architect spoke to your landscaper. Your landscaper had proposed certain things. Your landscaper was supposed to provide a drawing of that. He said he couldn't or wouldn't, and asked our landscaper to do it. But our landscaper's not going to do that, because if he were required to do that, he'd charge the village for that. So, that's where it's at. Mr. Zawinski is going to intervene now and try to straighten out this back and forth.
Yeah, this friend told me that our landscaper's ready to go, so I don't know.
Well, he might be ready to go, but he hasn't provided a plan. We've been asked waiting for it.
Okay. So, I'm just going to reach out and coordinate that.
He will, he will probably help.
Okay. Yeah, we are anxious because it is planting season, and we're afraid if this passes by, we'll go another year. I know I had guests come over two weekends ago, and, you know, they came in my back door, and when they were standing there, there was a man on the platform, on the plate platforms, just looking down at us, and they're, you know, just... They're like, "Oh, my God, what happened here?" And it's, you know, makes me embarrassed to live where I live. It's never been like that. It just passed by my refrigerator the other day, and there's a picture of my daughter when she was young. There was just trees in the background, and now there's just people looking down at us, and these unraveled wind heads and crazy things happening. So, I appreciate it, but moving along while it's still planting season. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to hear it tonight? Anybody else?
Just Matt?
Okay. Mr. Don? Good evening, Schneider, very thorough street, perhaps fifty-four years resident at twelve o'clock. It's nice to see you all, and likewise, I'm sure. I have four suggestions tonight that I'd like you to get up here and run them by you, consideration, and see what you think. Nothing on the scale of Belmont or the Third Rail, but nevertheless, maybe one or two of them you might find interesting. The first one, if I may approach, I have some flyers to give out to the board and maybe to Jerry. Couple of the other chiefs maybe could get one. Anybody else? Thank you. All right, what you're looking at here is a map of a town in Illinois called Naperville, Illinois, about an hour southwest of Chicago. I was there not too long ago, visiting some relatives, and I was opening up the newspaper. This jumped out at me, and as you can see, it's a map of Naperville. Really large town, sixty, seventy thousand people. And what it has here is called the Naperville Police Beat, and you can see to the right there, there are marks there on the map where criminal activity has been going on. You know, to the left is exactly what happened, and also the name and person of the day, the time, etc., etc. And as I looked at this, I thought, what a great idea for the residents. The only thing I don't like here, I get right for that right now, is that I wouldn't put the name in. I don't think that's necessary for a family to be embarrassed anymore. They already have enough problems with maybe the arrest, and jail, and lawyers who knows why. But I like this because it informs the residents of the criminal activity that's happening in their neighborhood. And I thought about Floral Park at the Gateway, that years and years ago, they had something, I think, called a police plot. Correct me if I'm wrong. So, for example, that I'm on Florence Street, if there was a couple of break-ins on Adelaide, one on Remsen, one on Rogers, as a citizen, I would be aware of that so I could be more security conscious. Make sure my garage doors are down, make sure my lights are on, make sure my windows and doors are locked at night. Same thing, I could let my neighbors know. So, I think it's a great idea. It doesn't have to be on this scale. You don't need a map, obviously, for Floral Park. You don't have to put the name of the person in. And then somewhere ten years ago, that police plot had disappeared. And so, a title like this, the board, two questions. One, why did that disappear? Where did it go? And why can't we bring it back? Is it because the real estate people don't want it, or the low of the value of the houses? Is it because the Chamber of Commerce doesn't want it, because it looks like it's bad news in the paper? So, Mr. Mayor, if you could tell me tonight, whatever happened to the police plot, and could we bring it back on a small scale, not like this?
I would like to believe that because we live in one of the safest communities in the country, we don't need it.
Right.
Okay. And as we've been rated one of the safest communities in the country. I don't know why it stopped. I really, I would have to find out why it stopped. I really don't know. But in regard to something like this, I definitely disagree with putting names in.
Definitely.
I definitely don't believe that our crime levels raise to the level, and if we do have something, we have avenues by which we can, you know, something where there is, as you described, maybe, we had a couple of break-ins somewhere, and that we have a communication system in place to rise to the level, that we get information out to residents without putting police plotters and putting all different kinds of crime statistics. Most of the crime we had here, you know, maybe violations, things like that, not a lot, you know what I mean? It's not there, it's a, we rise to the level, and we have major theft, or major, you know, house break-ins, things like that. We have a phenomenal, well-trained police force who protects us, and you got to be careful. I'm not saying we shouldn't look at it. We'll take a look at it, but I, you know, right now, given...
Just that up going on.
Given what's going on and things like that, I'd like to believe.
That's good news to hear.
Yeah, thank God we're in a very safe place, and I thank the police every day for the effort they do so. Go ahead, issue.
Recently, we had a lot of car break-ins and unlock, parking as far as unlock. That was clear after Steve was going to Facebook, police paper.
Well, we put on our website, put on the social website, tried to put out on our Facebook page, you know, tried to use social media the best we can, tried to put it out in the local papers, dispatch. And whenever we go to the civic, I give all the information to them, as well as myself and some of my party, my tool captains, my party, Darty, all of these people. And we'll talk about those things, because we want people to be aware. The information is a good thing, I agree with you, so.
We did it in localized areas where we knew those break-ins.
Yeah, we were getting, we got hit up in the Hillcrest area, and then we're just coming back, coming back, coming back. Found a report, somebody.
So, some residents saying that Hillcrest were not social media savvy, so to speak, and there were some break-ins there, how would all those residents find out if they're not tuned in and they don't have Facebook? Like, myself, I don't have Facebook. How would we find out if there's a rash of break-ins on Adelaide and Remsen?
The village site.
How would we know?
Our village.
Village site, our official site.
Official site.
And we send it to the Gateway, Chris? I don't know if you're aware of this. Usually, it's two weeks later that something that we send in gets published.
All right, so it's almost a month by the time I'm back. So, my bike's in my garage, it'll be gone by then, but I thought I'd...
I was interested, was that something that egregious where we thought we'd probably get a local call from one of us? Or an email, or things like that? More than, I guess, communication, that's what we use. So, definitely, we made people, I'm not saying, I understand what you're putting forward, but we've put a lot of things in place to try and make sure that those things are... Communication gets to you on a timely manner, more than it gets to you in a, you know, doing something like that. But I do agree with you, by not putting names in and things like that, I think that's...
This is a plug for civic associations.
All right. Well, thank you, it's good news to know that you've got much going on. All right, secondly, is something that you've been dealing with last several weeks or months, which has led to here, but I think you might want to take a step further. I could have a suggestion. And that is the knuckleheads that block the boxes in town. There are three corners that I'm very, very well aware, because I'm there all the time. And one is the Magnolia Plainfield. Takes sometime between four thirty and six thirty, two or three lights to get there, because my daughter lives in the family on the Magnolia, so I'm always going over there, or I'm going out to the pool, trying to see my buddy Sean up there. So, I'm constantly behind that village pizza there waiting. In fact, a couple of months ago, telling the chief, I sort of guided out his car, even when he was saying it wasn't very nice, gesturing to the car that was stuck in the block, in the box. And the other corner, of course, I saw a police officer there last week by the corner deli. Sometimes, there's two cars blocking the box there. And the third one, I'm always there all the time, because I'm making a right turn by the landmark building, United Farms, and the library. There's sometimes two cars blocking, nobody can get through there. And I know you're giving out over a hundred summonses, you've given out a couple hundred warnings. I'm sure that's going to continue. I think it's only in that part, but I don't think I have to be a traffic expert to realize that, particularly when you're going to close the main, or they will close Cobra for six months. They're going to be coming to Appleby, no doubt about that. And look ahead, two years from now, and that stadium is built, and there's ten, fifteen thousand people coming, and Cross-Silence backed up, they'll be taking Plainfield Tyson to a good connection. So, I don't see it getting any better. So, what else to do? I don't think you can keep a police officer there all the time. What about this? We've all driven to Manhattan, and I know that at all those intersections in midtown Manhattan, they have these signs, "Don't block the box, fines or points," which might, might look...
Because maybe I can...
Can you put the signs up?
I'm not trying to cut you off, but I think we can get to the point here. The reality is that we have petitioned the county, those county roads that you're talking about, okay? We petitioned the county to allow us to put up the signs and paint, paint the boxes, okay, to control.
Paint the road.
Paint the road, so we can do that. Right now, we technically can't really enforce it, because we don't have the boxes painted and things like that. We're just waiting on the county to give us the okay. We will actually, we will actually...
We have a meeting last week.
Yeah, I apologize. Okay, this has been updated, you won't deny that, so. Go ahead, Jerry.
You had a meeting last week, and they, as part of the Cobra, I would veto plan, one of the issues the county required upon our request was that PTC install these "Don't block the box." But we're going to actually work with them and have this "Don't block the box" section, exactly what you were speaking about.
That's right.
Will you put up signs, or just going to paint the road?
Both.
Oh, there you go. Stay all the time.
Let's move through.
Hey, Chris, we're also going to, we're trying to see, we're trying to synchronize the lights. That was another problem.
Yeah.
Obviously, there is a sink. The one pushback from them was, they're not sure the equipment is modern enough to actually accommodate that request. Because I don't want it, I want it synchronized during rush hours. I don't want it synchronized on off hours, because then I got people speeding through my town. It's a narrow road, a lot of bars, a lot of people, you know, congregating up on the loop. I don't want to foresee an accident. So, I like it when it's green, green, red, red. That's sorted, it'll go down. During the peak hours, during the rush hours, that's when we want more red or green at the same time, so it gets the flow of traffic going. They agreed with it. They have some data done by StanTech. Well, they, actually, today, they've acknowledged that they will be doing the optimization study of the basketballs, the optimization study. Steve's correct. That may show that, you know, all the limited things that you do, but the first step is having the study done, and the county's requiring that, also StanTech, and everything you can see.
Okay, so this...
Yeah, Chris, we've been working on this since the last...
Sometimes I think I might need a little bit of a light, because sometimes I'm on my bike every day, and I'm at the corner there by a fiber landmark. At rush hour, I'm sitting there, maybe to the front to the gate, and the car's stopped there. You've got to see the people, give them a finger, curse, and scream, and just show a little bit. So, but anyway, I'm glad to see things are progressing. All right. Moving on, number three, I think we have a code that I think needs to be enforced somehow, or we need to get rid of the code or enforce it. And that is sanitation going out. I think there's a code, tell me if I'm right, that it's supposed to buy a dust, I need to take six o'clock on the garbage going out. On Florence Street, for example, lovely neighbors, everybody's been there for thirty, forty, fifty years, nobody leaves. We just want to get Kevin to kiss or smile a little bit more, and be okay. Very difficult, my neighbor, but, um... At least three of my neighbors...
You know what you said far about that whole thing is we all laugh, because we all get it.
Three of my neighbors, wonderful people, they put the garbage out. We were on Sunday nights on Florence Street, put them out at three o'clock in the afternoon, almost like hardcore. Two cans, bags, blue bins, so from three to eight, the garbage is there. When I go around my bike, because I see mother blocks, there's a guy over on Beach Street, puts it out around noon. And this seems to be all over town. So, what to do? I know you have a code enforcer, but I'm sure if he or she doesn't work Sunday afternoons, maybe the union rules permitting somebody from doing that. I thought about maybe having the police officers on a Sunday afternoon, if it's quiet, no, you know, no accidents, fires, and things like that. Start leaving seven or eight houses, that takes fifteen, twenty minutes, out of town, shift. Knocking on the door, give a warning, they're not there. Put a letter from village hall in their mailbox. Otherwise, either enforce the code, or get rid of the code. I know you put it in your column now and then, but that's useless. Half the towns are getting the gateway, the quarter, the other half reads it, goes over their head, the other quarter probably go along with it. So...
You're just talking about the...
Come up with a solution. I gave you two. You might have another one, or none at all, because right now, the daylight same time starting now, I think it's a terrible thing to do, where people just, you know, put it out there. Sometimes I think I put it back.
Chris, we should have governmental...
So, we had some success, not anywhere close to a hundred percent success. I have a program for Sunday nights, have addresses.
You do?
I do. And have addresses, right, there's a letter that we drafted maybe six, eight months ago, and we give it to residents the next morning, telling them the whys and hows, and it's somewhat successful, but there are some people who may have extenuating circumstances that still do it, or just went to some... We had some success, but...
Over in Florence?
I haven't, I haven't had to have been over by here, though. Mostly north of Jericho, like, not straight.
Beach Street, Florence Street, you know, I just used to live on the beach.
I'll take a ride Sunday night, against matters.
Yeah, you know, I would even take six o'clock, I'd even like six o'clock, you know, with three o'clock in town, you know. But the code enforcer obviously doesn't work Sunday afternoons, right, not the code enforcer, so it has to be your way, I guess. Yeah. What about a police officer stopping now and then?
Maybe we could take everyone.
You talk about it, some of the nice officers, I'm sure, want to get out to a exercise, knock on the door, give a little warning. Give me a badge, I'd love to do it.
Probably you'd want to do that. You're not the only one with that.
Right. All right, so, by May, I expect to see no garbage on Florence Street, three o'clock on, Kevin, I expect...
Expect to see Kevin there at some point.
He's been deputized.
By the way, the gentleman I mentioned before was one of the culprits. Good one with that. I'm not even... You have one before? All right, the last one, and then I'll keep getting more. Has to do with recreation, Mr. Trustee Frank.
No more, that's not a free one.
No more? Who's the recreation trustee?
That would be him.
Oh. All right, two suggestions. One is, it was an article in Gateway last September, which I kept, and when you read it, it sounds great. Floral Park Record Center, just a couple of sentences. When you read this, somebody reads it and says, "Wow, this is great." Says, "Labor Day tradition, final dip into the pool, five P M. once again, splash, hundreds of kids laughing, giggling, gathering poolside, mayor, trustees from all they had, you could find a whistle, jumping in, jumping out. Everybody had a grand old time." Sounds terrific. I think it's awful. What do we think? I was there last Monday, Labor Day. Ninety-five degrees, humidity off the charts. I'd been going to the pool since the seventies, either working or as a resident. Had to be a thousand people there, fifteen hundred, pick a number. And you close the pool at five. Why? What's the rush? It's going to be closed all fall, winter, spring. Imagine this scenario. Four o'clock, somebody gets on the loudspeaker and says, "Because of the high humidity, the mayor and the board trustees decided to keep the pool open until six." Can you imagine the cheers to goodwill, to PR? You can't buy PR like that. And we used to do it all the time, thanks to these gentlemen over there, Aiden, Laurie, and Capola. Maybe four or five times during the summer, when it got to be ninety-five, Tom would call my clock. Chris, keep it open another hour, so it was six to seven, it was eight to nine, quarter to nine, quarter to ten, and he was trustee and mayor. Same thing with Steve, same thing with Alan. And then somewhere along the line, it stopped.
Chris, Chris, I just interrupted you there.
Keep it open.
Chris, could I just interrupt you?
Sure.
We do that all the time. If it's a hot night, we keep the pool open, okay? On that night, on that night, I'm not going to say maybe we can, okay? But the reality is, there's a whole bunch of things that happen that night. And one of the things that we experience is, well, when you were pool director, we had no problem getting lifeguards. Lifeguards now are very difficult to get. Due to restrictions and due to the need, okay? Come Labor Day, many of our lifeguards are back to school. Okay, so we have, you know, staffing and things like that are always an issue. One of the things with closing that pool that night is, we close the pool, and then everybody on the pool staff works to get the pool closed and ready, moving chairs, things like that. The only thing we have the next day is we have one section open, where we have the picnic for the seniors right after that. So, that's, there's a lot that goes on that night. I'm not saying we shouldn't take a look at it. We'll take a look at it. But just so you know, on a hot night, there's many times we keep that pool open an extra hour, so, okay? So, we definitely...
I'm there almost every day, and I, you know, maybe I'm not there that late, so maybe...
Trustee Fitzgerald, Deputy Mayor Tim Fitzgerald is the first one in the pool when we keep it open at night, so I know that, so it's great. We definitely... We definitely, you know...
Well, I think it's something that should, you're right, it's ninety-five.
Yeah, we do do.
Again, I understand, Labor Day, if you have no lifeguards, what are you going to do?
You just have to be careful.
But it's a shame that you had to close at five when there were a million people there, and it was ninety-five.
Labor Day supporters might appreciate the closing, because schools lost them.
Schools lost them, too.
All right, the last thing on recreation is...
Not four, that's five.
I know, I can't agree, I can't agree. Well, there's two under recreation.
I'm just kind of...
There's a gentleman named Frank Trilio. He's on the tennis group with us up there. We have about twenty, thirty gals and guys, and I play all the time. And Frank is very talented. He plays guitar, he sings with his buddy, he plays at Swing the Teapot. He's played in Mike Park Restaurant before a close, he's over on set there in Naperville, Naperville, in Garden City on Friday nights. And he played last summer on a Friday night at the pool. So, word spread among the tennis group, let's get up there and support Frank, and so we had about thirty, forty people up there. And we did on a beautiful Friday night, eight o'clock, Frank's playing, and basically, they weren't ones there. Okay? So, the tennis fan, Frank, four hundred bucks for two hours, and there's no name. And the reason being is that there's no advertisement, you don't sell it. That big bulletin board that's in the pool office there, there are twenty flyers on it, and then there's a flyer there with Frank's picture like this, and he's playing Friday night. And then maybe there's a sentence in the recreation column that's buried. My foot thinking is, you've got to get his picture and an article about him in the week before. You have to put his picture on the table where people click in and have the ladies at the desk, don't forget, Frank's coming Friday night, bring your family, bring your friends. You've got to get the word out about that. Otherwise, you just, you know, four hundred dollars down the drain there. And Frank's very talented, good guy. I know when I was there, you know, we get Craig Kramer's band, it'd be five hundred people. Irish Step Dance is five hundred people, Magician, five hundred people, Pool Dance, thousand people. Because we sold it, you've got to let people know that he's there, otherwise, he's playing in front of seventy people. And he's really talented, I'm sure the only other recreation people you get, or the people you get in are talented, too. But I think you've got to do a little bit more on the PR and let people know. If not, you know, you're going to have empty Friday nights there, and I just hate to see that. Particularly, he was a buddy of mine, he came up to me when I worked there, I guess, he says, "Chris, there's nobody here." I said, "Do you want me to do it?" He said, "What, the friend?" So, that's my four and a half suggestion, Mr. Sager.
Good to see you, Chris.
At this point. And, Mr. Mayor, I'll put you on the spot here for a second.
It's different now?
Sure. Two years ago, okay, because of my expertise in sports, recreation, vehicles, I was athletic director at two different high schools. You said you were going to put me on the recreation board, and it's two years later, I haven't heard. So, I wonder if I didn't make the cut? Well, the mail is getting delayed. If I didn't get the cut, it's okay, you hurt my feelings, at my age, you can't hurt my feelings. All right?
I would have to apologize. I remember having the conversation that you wanted to be on it. Okay, I'll take care of it.
Well, it just, listen, don't pressure, but I'm just wondering what happened. And I'm just saying, you've got somebody in town who has a little expertise in this area, and I'm not saying the toughest people on the board are, but I can shake things up a little bit.
Yeah, all right. Okay. All right, we'll have that conversation then.
All right, good. Good, good, good. And the last thing I want to mention is that, so, and I just want, on behalf of myself, and my family, and many residents I know, just like to thank all of you for all your work and efforts, particularly the Third Rail and the, um, and Belmont, the hours you put in, mind modeling. No one's really aware of it, but I can tell you, there's a lot of people out there appreciate everything that all of you do, and so I just want to let you know tonight that there's a lot of people out there appreciate us.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We don't do it alone, but thank you, Chris. With that, thank you all for being here tonight. Everyone in the city. Felix, thank you, justifies me, you're appreciated, I know you've had one day.
Yeah.
We spent most of it together, but thank you all very much. Have a good night.